Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this March meeting of Board of Education. It started out as a pretty quiet or slow meeting, not too many items, and it's kind of grown. So tonight, we not only have the presentation of the budget and talk about the budget, but we also have the regular board meeting, and then we have a seminar afterwards, which I think everybody's familiar with. First thing, we see if we've got a quorum, and I believe we've got everybody here tonight except for Monte Chek. In good shape there. So we'll call the meeting to order since we have the quorum, Catherine. The first item is to approve the agenda.
Some move?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so the first thing I might mention is that according to the rules as far as the approval of the budget, that it is a public hearing, and anyone is invited to bring in a statement or talk about that. So we want that to be made known, and if there's any statements, we can collect them right now, or anybody can speak up when we start to discuss that. Okay, so go ahead and turn that over to Superintendent.
Okay, Brian.
You know, in the email that we sent to you last week, I basically sent out the script of what we're going to cover, so I'm going to pretty much stick to that. I tried to just hit the high point. When we started this process, I did, I probably had an inkling we were going to get some kind of unusual results, which that did play out. We had, you know, a lot of it was largely due to, we had fund balance increases which came about with stimulus, so I kind of suspected when we're looking at our cash reserve levy, we were going to be limited in how much we could cash reserve levy. The other thing is, is we had a pretty healthy increase in our valuations. You know, with that in mind, we, when we did this budget, we tried to come up with something that takes both our short-term and our long-term goals into consideration. And obviously, I always use the word, you know, when it's a budget, it's more of your estimating. So when you're dealing with the FY '23 budget, you're dealing with something that really doesn't come into fruition until a year and a half from when you started. We also are in the process of updating our five-year projection model, and what we did is we used, we've got the assumptions we used in this budget into that. We're not completely done updating that for the reason is we don't, we haven't settled on all the compensation increases for next year. We do have some estimates in there. Jenny and I had kind of talked about, we, at some point in time, we need to have what we call a finance, I don't know, if you want to use a training session or an update session, that we would go over the comprehensive financial five-year model, and then I'd give you guys the opportunity to ask questions if you're unclear on something, how the funds work. The one thing we really always have to be willing to do is make adjustments to our financial projections as variables change. But anyway, I'll get right into the budget. I'm really, I'm not going through it line by line. I'm going to hit the highlights, and if you guys have questions, fire away. We can do it at the end or as you want to go. The second page of it, which looks like this, which is the actual notice of public hearing with the proposed budget, that's what was published in the paper on the 11th. That is what we would approve tonight, hopefully. The one thing to keep in mind when you're looking at this, this is not general fund. It's not any specific fund. It's all the funds together, okay? That's how you have to present this budget. There are several things to note on this page. Line one is the taxes levied on property. They did decrease, and when you look at the far-right column, make sure you understand that's the decrease from '21 to '23, not '22 to '23. I'm not sure why they do that, but that's the way it's always been, that way. The decrease in that, essentially, a lot of that's got to do with, we have less cash reserve levy than we did in the past. Because we have the funds, we were limited in the amount of cash reserve levy, and that not organically is just going to bring your tax rate down, or your tax asking down, I'm sorry. Line six, that is the nutrition program sales. You're going to see a substantial change in that one from the last two years to this year. What ended up happening the last two years is we had where everybody got free lunches, and that's all financed through the federal dollars. And now that we go back to where the patrons will be paying, that obviously is going to raise this figure up. Line 13, that is the commercial industrial replacement. That does show a zero for 2023 because that is last year, or the year we're in right now is the last year for that. Line 15 is the, line 15 is the federal sources line. That is the line that the stimulus dollars would be in. The stimulus dollars are reported as revenue as you spend them. So we had a fair amount of those funds that were utilized this current year, and the amount went down a little bit for next year because I will be just finishing up on that. And then lines 18 and 37, those are the amounts that are transferred from the penny fund, the SAVE fund, to the debt service fund. You will notice that in the budget year 2023, it's substantially less than the other two years. That is because based upon our current debt schedule, we now are just on the way tail end of paying off the general obligation bond, and the revenue bond is still a smaller amount for this year and next year, and then that will start, that amount will grow. The debt requirements for the revenue bond will go up at that point in time, but we've got a couple of years here where the payments essentially are quite a bit lower. Okay? And let's see. Also on that page, line 24, 24 illustrates the total amount that we spend on our instructional. That did increase from last year, from this year to next year. A lot of that's just compensation increases. That would actually probably make up all of the difference there. Then also, line 31A is the total support services. To understand what's total support services, when you have a budget, there's four lines that they consider. One is the instructional, two is the total support services. Total support services consists of anything from the transportation, the buildings and grounds, the principals budget, the district-wide budget, the nursing budget, the guidance budget. All of those are wrapped into that one line. They do show a separate line on here, but that, those as a total are aggregated when you see if you're in or outside of the budget on that. So line 31A is that total. That actually stayed pretty level. Line 35A is the total other expenditures, and again, just to explain, that's going to include your debt payments, your AEA flow-through, and then any small projects that you've done throughout the district, just to give you a preview at some point in time. If there is a facility spending, that's the line it's going to end up on. And then really, the final figure I really want to note on there is the bottom figure. That is what our property tax levy rate will be if approved for next year. I'm going to go through some comparisons of that a little bit later on, so, but that's what we would propose would be $11.35. If you would want to move on to the next page, the next page, that has some real basic revenue and expenditure comparisons from '21 to '22 to '23. I won't go deeply into those other than say, our revenues will obviously be down from the last two years. Stick that with a little bit of a grain of salt. When you have stimulus funds, they're going to tend to be higher, okay? And likewise, I really essentially give you the same comment for the expenditures. Our proposed levy rate is the $11 and almost 35 cents. Last year's levy rate was $12.30, so there is considerable drop there. You know, in reality, everything's so formula-driven, there isn't a whole lot you can do to a levy rate. You can change your management levy. You can change your cash reserve levy, and obviously, you could change your PEPAL levy, but I think that would be a tough sell because of the fact that we've always promised we're going to levy a dollar for that. So the way I look at it, we really have two things we can affect, okay? And the previous board had set a parameter of a maximum of $12.38. We're obviously going to be slightly under that this year, okay? And if you would go to the next page after that, which would be the page four of the packet, that gives you a breakdown of the levy components on the top one. As you can see, there's really, the PEPAL didn't change. The management did go up a little bit, and that's kind of in preparation of some things probably coming forward on that. We are looking possibly into, and we really haven't made a commitment, that there's something called the equipment breakdown insurance, and we, it's something that helps the general fund. So it's something we're looking into, and we want to make sure we at least have enough funds if we choose to move forward there. If not, it'll help in the future. And then obviously, our general fund, that's where the big decrease is. You can kind of see the components of that if you go to the next page, but I think I'll help, I'll do it in the order we have here. The middle table, I always like to illustrate that because it shows with the change in the SSA, the allowable growth, it shows that we are going to have some increases in our TSS, our professional development, our early intervention, our TLC, and our preschool. So it does show that there's going to be some increases there. The one you probably, the one probably that jumps off the page there is, the preschool is considerably up. That was anticipated because we last year went to, you count last year for what you're going to get for the following year, and we went to a universal preschool with Shelby County Catholic, and essentially what ends up happening is, it's our preschool program, but then we just contract them for the services. It actually is good for all the kids. It makes it that much better. So that one, and that actually potentially is probably going to go up again next year because we're probably going to have another partnership there we're going to enter into.
So basically, it's a net. I mean, it went up, but the amount that went up, we're going to...
You know, Joni, what will end up happening out of it? It's going to make the whole program better because you have some efficiencies in your costs, so it allows you actually to do more things, actually not only for them, but for us. So it's, I have to be careful when you say net, it actually gives us the ability to do more things within our preschool program.
Is it enrollment-driven?
Oh, 100%.
And preschool students only count as half a student on our enrollment? Because some go half day, yeah, ours go half day, but in other districts, they might go full day, but they still only need half. So, yeah, and Brian, we're going to, there's a contract, and I'm going to talk to you guys about that too, with Head Start. So we would, we would get 16 students possibly in addition, and then we would get to count them and get Head Start federal dollars as well as counting them, so that's where it might go.
What's really nice is all these partnerships actually are better, they're good for the other kiddos.
It would be our kids eventually, anyway.
They're also good for us, too.
Yeah.
It just makes it that much stronger. Any alliances you can have, they're always are going to make it that much better. Then finally, on the bar, I've got a lot of words down on the bottom, but I already went through the first one. The cash reserve levy is only going to be $440,000, and that's obviously because we are limited. Last year, it was $840,000. We do not qualify for a budget guarantee, and I'm going to give you a quick and hard budget guarantee. Budget guarantee can come into play if you have declining enrollment and the allowable growth there at the SSA they give us, if it's not a lot. What happens is then the Department of Management allows you to have something called a budget guarantee. Well, I always describe this as kind of like a pillow from helping you fall too fast. So what they do is, is they allow you to essentially have the dollars you had this year so you have time to adjust. Because SSA was where it was, and we didn't have a drastic decrease in enrollment, we did not qualify for the budget guarantee. Now, if you look at the agenda, we are approving a budget guarantee. The first year I was in this, they said, you know what? You always want to approve it because you never know if the legislature might pull at the tail end. So you go ahead and prove it that way. If it does come into play, you have it already. You can't do it after the fact. So even though we don't qualify for a budget guarantee, we're going to approve the budget guarantee. Okay? That make sense to you?
So we'll have a resolution on the books that if it does happen...
Yeah, it's protecting us against the legislature doing something later than we should let we don't know. It really came into play here a couple of years ago when they didn't set SSA till April because nobody knew. And so, but I've always been told, pass it no matter what. Larry Siegel says that, too. He says, pass it no matter what. He says, it's just a resolution, and if you don't use it, that's fine. Okay? The third little thing that, in those notes on that page are, and I actually covered this when we were going over the audit, that all of our bond payments, both our general obligation and our revenue bond, they're all paid out of SAVE dollars. So we make all our payments out of the SAVE dollars presently. We did increase, we did increase our management levy this year. Part of that is, is again, it's actually a three-fold reason. One is, we met with our insurance agent, and there are going to be some fairly large increases statewide on property and casualty insurance. It's, to be honest with you, ours is probably going to be a lot better than some. So, but that's one of the reasons. The second one is, is we always like to have the funds there should we decide to do an early retirement package going forward. And then the third one, which I shared with you, is we are looking into that third type of insurance. It's, we're actually, I think, going to get a presentation later on this week.
If we decide to do early retirement packages, it's for 2023?
It would be for the end of 2023.
So when do you have to have that decided?
I'll go ahead and let Jenny, that's typically...
So this year, we spoke about that in October. We approved it in October, and the deadline was November or December-ish.
And in November, it was like the 30th or...
Yeah, and you had to, so what we would decide as board is, Brian will say, this is the pot of money that we have, and we can use it, so how many do we want to do? So this year, we had five, and we actually only had four individuals who said they wanted to do that. So we would just be limited based on the...
And then it's also, it was also, you know, made clear that the retirement package is on a year-to-year basis, and it's not supposed to be like assumed or accepted, or, because it's all kind of the money is there.
Or what it looks like even?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And that's on a year-to-year basis, yeah.
Brian, when you sit down and put all these numbers together, is it an assumption that the property tax levy is really your cushion, or that that's everything? Some of the other funding is pretty much set in stone? Is that a fair idea or not?
What I would tell you is, is so much of what you do in this, the budget now, is where your tax rate ends up is pretty much most all formula-driven. You don't really have a lot of factor. There's two things, is where you're ending up with your levy rate. Probably the hardest part to do about a budget is, is you obviously, when you're setting your budget, I go through and essentially, line item by line item, determine, okay, so where are we going to be at this year versus next year? You know, the figures on that first page, the one that, we literally go through every line item and say, okay, where are we going to be at? So we determine where we're headed to. I've always, and this isn't philosophically the way everybody does it, but I essentially try to get it down to as close as we can. You're going to find out, you're going to have to amend budgets, and sometimes it's because your instructional is going to end up being a little higher, and your support's going to be a little lower. But when I'm going through this, I'm trying to estimate where I think we're literally going to be. And once we reexamine it, it's about the time of year now, we'll reexamine our current year's budget, and then we'll determine, yep, okay, we got to adjust this one up or this one down. Yet literally, when you have the stimulus funds, you're, in some ways, you're throwing a dart against the wall because you don't know where some of that, you're going to expand some of the stuff. Let me give you an example of what, one of the, one of the things you have to amend a budget for, and this is just one example, but when we budget our PEPAL, we budget, okay, this much for this, this much for this. Well, we had the opportunity to purchase that used bus. That's going to skewer the timing, and so that's where, that's like a reason you would be doing it for. Did I answer your question at least somewhat?
A little bit, you know. I see you sat down and really look at the expense end of things, and is it the same really on the revenue end of things, or you should...
Sure. I would say yes, we try to get it as close as we can. The one thing you always have to, when, and Greg can speak to this because having done the city council, when, in the grand scheme of things, they don't hold you accountable for what your revenues are compared to what you're budgeting. They hold you accountable to what your expenses are compared to what you budgeted. So the answer to your question, yes, we do. We try to get it as close as we can. We do it line item, just like we do the expenses. But when we're looking this spring at where we're at for this year, I'll be looking at the expenses because that's the reason you have to amend a budget. It's not because your revenues are going to change, it's because your expenditures are going to change.
Okay? Oh, I'm sorry. The five-year projection thing that we kind of, seemed like we kind of moved into that a year or two ago, which is a great thing. Is that kind of going where we expected it? It's already an unknown word, and enrollment's going to be five years from now.
Well, we're constantly updating that, actually. We start with the true update every fall, and now as things happen through the year, we're constantly updating it. When we, when we know what our compensation costs are going to be next year, that's probably the one variable we don't really have yet. So once that we get that, we'll probably sit down, remember when we went through that here, probably a year ago?
I was going to say about a year ago.
A year ago. I'm waiting a little longer this year because I want to get all the compensation changes.
So then we would roll that out another year?
Yep.
I mean, it's a great...
But if you're asking where we thought we were going, yeah, we're on target.
But line 35A is total other expenditures, and you said they're small projects. Can you give an example of what some of those small projects are?
In that, you're going to have, what you're going to have in that, a lot of what we spend in PEPAL. You're going to have things like, and I'm just trying to do this. Fix-it projects we have in PEPAL is going to make up a lot of that at this point, at this point in time. That's probably where the majority of that line item is. It might be small projects, the weight room project that we worked on, the shop project. I'm trying to...
Mostly building, though?
Total.
Mostly building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of what you're going to have in there is going to be building.
Okay, well, it's projected down $400,000, and so why is that?
Okay, because we actually, several of the approved projects we had this year for, well, I'm going to give you an example, which you feel the air coming from, that we had three fairly good-sized HVAC things that happened this year. That was a lot of the difference. It's not all of it, and we did a few other, the weight room was part of that. So a lot of that happened this year, some of that will go back to normal next year.
And those were stimulus dollars, too, Joni?
Yeah, that's...
Did EPIUS come out of there? The EPIS project?
That would be listed in that line when it happens. That would be a great example. Okay, I'm down to the last page, and essentially, I'll real quickly go through this. As you can see, there was a fairly sizable increase in valuations this year.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
I can't hear you.
Okay, there's a fairly sizable increase in valuations. The tax asking, that is how much it went down from the prior year. That illustrates the line one on the budget form. And then I thought it would be nice to kind of illustrate where the tax asking went down. The PEPAL actually went up some, and that was just because of the increase in valuations, and we stayed at a dollar levy there. So that, that's going to have an increase. As I spoke earlier, the management did go up. That was somewhat by design and somewhat by necessity. The necessity part of it is, is we know we're going to have higher insurance premiums, and we should be happy because there are schools that are struggling to get property and casualty insurance right now. So it's, it's a tough market. What do you call it? A hard market? It's a real hard market. And then finally, the one, the bottom one, is the general fund, and that shows you that it went down $454,000. And then I did, off to the side here, change, put the components of the, and as you can see, the majority of that decrease is because we're cash reserve levying less. see, the majority of that decrease is because we're cash reserve levying less. But that's really all I have. Have any questions or stuff you need clarified? And Jenny said I could only talk for 20 minutes, and I kind of overshot, so.
That's a good conclusion. Decrease in property taxes. Property taxes, that's a good.
Yeah, that's a good, that's really good because sometimes we've lowered the levy, and people can sometimes look at that and say, well, valuations going up, you've still got more money. This year, we can see that there's still a decrease, which is nice to be able to do for the.
The flip side is, is how, one of the things we always try to do is at least cash reserve levy, at least enough to get our sped deficit. We won't be able to do that this year. So I'll use the word, I don't know if it's a good choice of term, but organically, it's going down a little farther than we'd have liked to, but, because on a sped deficit, you can get the authority back, you can always get the authority back, but guess what? You got to go get the cash.
Any further discussion on the, this is the presentation of the budget, so in the next round, we'll talk about approving the budget. Okay, can we have a motion on the presentation of the budget?
We don't.
Do we adjourn first? Do we need to approve the?
Not yet.
Do you approve it in the regular meeting?
Okay, and any comments from the public? Okay, how about a motion then to adjourn this meeting? Jeff, could you raise your hand?
They won't let me talk anymore.
I talked almost as much as Jeff.
Don't exaggerate.
I have Albertson.
I moved during the meeting.
You did?
I just did.
Oh, thank you.
And the second, then?
Yes.
Okay, good shape. Okay, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? No?